Thank you. Welcome, I would like to call our meeting to order. It is Thursday, April 6th. And could we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start, we're going to start with good news and recognition of the boys' basketball team. That is going to be moved to later in the meeting as half the basketball team is running at CCONC right now and are still in CCONC, so we'll move that around later. Public participation is next. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the committee? Seeing none, we're going to move the principal reports up on the agenda, so we'll have principals go first, and I believe we'll have Tracy Cote present first tonight.
Good evening.
Hi.
Wareham Middle School, our attendance is averaging about 92% for the month of March. We've had a wonderful new drama club presentation this year on March 30th. We had two showings of The Jungle Book Kids. It was about 30 minutes long, and it was a wonderful presentation, funny and entertaining and musical, and so we're very proud to bring back the drama club. We started a new term this week on April 5th, so we are now in term four. Tonight, we have a band concert. We just had a wonderful concert at 5:00, and we have another concert at 7:00. And we also had the chorus at the end of the band concert. Report cards for Term III will be issued on April 13th. Some curriculum highlights, March was an exciting, long month for us. It was the month of music in our schools, so we had some competitions by homerooms. We also had a college and career month in March at Wareham Middle School. And this year, we brought in community panels, so we presented three community panels for college and careers to each of the grade levels, and it was just a wonderful presentation where different community members discussed their career choices. Some of them chose to go to college, some of them chose not. They discussed those career paths with our students, so that was exciting to bring to Wareham Middle School. We've also just begun MCAS, so 5th and 6th grade took their ELA MCAS this week, 7th grade will take theirs next Monday and Tuesday. And Dr. Chandler brought over 4th grade to have a tour of Wareham Middle School last week, and they also had the pleasure of seeing the first rehearsal of The Jungle Book, so that also was an exciting event for us to bring back. We are planning in the future, we have field days for each grade level starting the end of May. We're doing a school-wide field trip to Watawiz. This is the first time ever, so one field trip for all of us. It's going to be a wild and crazy ride, and we're planning a grade 7 dinner trip, dinner dance. Questions or concerns for Wareham Middle School?
Any questions? April.
So roughly how many 4th grade students, and what do you think their biggest reaction was when they came to see the middle school after leaving the elementary school?
Seeing the middle school? Well, it wasn't brand-new, because remember the-
Oh, no, I meant coming from the brand-new building-
Oh. I mean, I think they were excited to be back, because remember, they did spend the beginning of the 3rd grade at Wareham Middle School, so I think they were excited to be back. Some of them were a little disappointed that they were going to be in the same wing and maybe in the same classes. But we do isolate 5th grade into the D-wing still, so that's where they'll be returning when they come. I think Dr. Chandler could tell you a little bit more about the presentation, but they were excited to be there and see the presentation and see some of the things that they can do at the middle school, so.
Jeff?
And if this is the wrong time to ask this question-
Sure.
-from a timing, maybe you haven't had, tell me about the Sentry experience.
It's been a really good experience.
For those of people who don't know about it, why don't you tell them what it's about?
So, we have teamed with a program that was developed in England, and they, we have piloted the program in 7th grade math. We also had two visitors from their program that came over to visit us. They did some training with staff, and they also taught classes within the 7th grade. So, the 7th grade teachers and I are going to meet, actually, about the program itself and the benefits of it, to see where we go in the future for that, so.
Do you have an initial positive, negative, neutral?
There's a lot of positives about it. I think they learned a lot through that experience that we had. When was that visit? In February, I believe. So, I think they've learned a lot more, so I'm curious just to see the teachers' reactions. The kids' reactions are good, and they like it, so I am curious. There was a lot of things that weren't lining up, but they fixed that part of it for our standards, so.
Alignment perspective?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
And is there a point at which they will take a formative assessment, and you'll be able to say, yes, this is working, or no, this is not working based on actual data?
So, my teachers didn't use it exclusively this year, they piloted it, so that's what they agreed to do. They agreed to try certain units of study, nuggets, they call them. So, it's different. It was a different experience for each teacher, it was a different experience for each child, so that's why we need to come together as a staff to discuss what our plans are for the future.
I just want to-
Yeah.
So, I've isolated the pilot teachers when they began the experience with the, and I'm matching those with our NUIAMAP growth scores, and so I have the initial sort of baseline of each of those experiences. It won't be, we could probably drill down to specific standard, but I'm very curious to do that again, so I'll collect the NUIAMAP data when we do that after, do we do it after MCAS or before?
We'll do it after.
So, following math, MCAS, they'll take their final NUIAMAP growth scores. I will collect those and look again, and to see if there's any change.
So, bottom line, it's premature to see how much of an impact it's having, but at some point in the future, you'll be able to tell us.
Well, I think it's very premature, because we didn't use Sentry exclusively.
Right.
And we also drilled hard on ST math this year, which we haven't done in the past, so that too has played into, I'm hoping, our students' successes in math.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tracy.
Awesome, thank you.
Scott or Dr. Chandler?
Good evening, school committee.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to be here again this evening. Attendance, I run a report both for February and March. February, we did have a downtick as a whole, coming in at 90.94, so close to 91%, but good news in March, we are at 93.21% as a whole, so there's improvement in March. We had excellent attendance this week in Grade 3, which we took the MCAS in Grade 3. I was very, very proud of the 180 students who took this MCAS. We had 12 students who did not complete, it was a record, for the first time ever in the elementary setting, we had students that did not finish the day, so they were still working as they were rolling out. So, I don't know, but all I can tell you is that that is a lot of effort, and that just shows a lot of care on their behalf of their eight-year-old mindset, so I'm very proud of them. Regardless of the results, the effort is there, so it was really remarkable to see. And other good news, while we were at MCAS, Ms. LaSorsa was supporting our technological features and making sure that we were on point, and revealed to us that we were one of three schools in the Commonwealth to receive a Gigi costume. Now, what a Gigi costume is, is a big penguin, very large penguin costume, and we won this because we had the March Madness, we were number, one of the top three schools in the nation for our puzzles, the number of math puzzles we solved, so we're pretty proud of that. I can't wait to see who's going to wear it.
Right, Bonnie?
This month, in this month of March, a guest lecturer from Cape Cod Canal Park spoke to the 3rd grade class of the history of the canals in the United States and the state of Massachusetts, deepening their knowledge of how the canal was built, and then the Grade 3, they go out on the field trip. So, this is neat, because Cape Cod Canal comes in and does a lecture within the school, and then they go out on a field trip. Our newspaper club, I don't know if you've seen our first edition of The West Newspaper, but it is online, it is on our website and the Wareham Public School site. It is very, very informative. You will get bios of teachers, you will find what's happening in Wareham Elementary School. It's a very good read, so after the school committee presentation, please do tune in. The Best of Wes, it's called. And there's even bios of the students, so they write their own bios of happenings. And other updates, we had a fabulous pancake breakfast this past Saturday, thank you, school committee members who volunteered to flapjacks, and the Easter Bunny had arrived, and it was just a great family event. Students and families got together, had some pancakes and sausage, and sat on the Easter Bunny's lap, and the Easter Bunny does not speak. We learned that through that experience-
As hard as that is.
-which was very, which was very difficult for some Easter Bunny. All right. In other news, there's a lot of conversation, we're excited about, you know, looking into curriculum. Dr. Schwam was at our school. She comes on Wednesdays to speak with us about our needs and wants, and looking at our data, of course, and we're in conversation about math programming, we're in conversation about ELA programming, and working to what the best fit is. We're having conversations around those programs. We have a lot of conversation about CKLA and working through the core knowledge. Looking at that, there's a lot, a lot of our teachers are working through this ELA program, and it's really phonetically-based in the early grades, but there's also units attached, so we're going back into units once again, and I was in a 1st grade class today, able to observe, and they were working on environments and habitats, and it was really enriching to see, because it has a little bit, the CKLA, and I think Dr. Schwam and I were speaking about it, a focus K2 thing, I saw that today. So, I'm interested in seeing more about that, a lot of our teachers are working through that, and thank you, Dr. Schwam, for funding those materials as well. And upcoming events, I've passed out to you what we have, a plethora of activity in April, May, and June coming our way with all kinds of activities. And at this time, I will take any questions you may have.
Joyce?
So, I don't have any questions, but yes, the pancake breakfast was awesome, so thank you for-
Oh, thank you. It was our first year, but I don't think it'll be our last.
It's just so nice to see all the families coming out, you know, to get together. Everyone is just so happy to be in the building, and the kids are so proud to show their families, you know, to sit in their seat where they eat their lunch, to, yeah. But I did see the newspaper, so impressed, they did such a good job. And it's funny you talk about the bios, because I found myself reading an article, and then going to the bio to see what grade the student was in, because they were, the writing was amazing. They did such a really great job, so.
They were really, they really worked hard, and they have a coming soon, so some bios are not quite there yet, but we're getting there, so thank you. Yes, Mr. Hudlette is doing a beautiful job, remarkable job, and there's 27 students in the Newspaper Club, 27. They stay twice a week until 4:30, and, yeah, it's wonderful.
So, we're looking like a monthly publication, or is it?
I think that's what we're going for.
That's the goal, yeah.
But if you see the length of the articles, yeah.
They have a lot to say.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, it's great.
I know, there's headliners, and I think Mr. Hudlette's doing very well, working through sentence starters and seeing how the written word and newspapers, how it begins, because there's catchphrases and-
Oh, definitely.
-whatnot. It's fun.
Jeff?
If you ask the typical, if there is such a thing, 3rd grader, what the MCAS is, they know it's not a typical test, obviously, because the typical test is a shorter, and they get feedback right away from the teacher. What do you think the typical 3rd grader thinks the MCAS is for?
Well, it's funny, you should ask that. We had, I had a presentation with the 3rd grade, and one of the first questions I asked was, what does the acronym stand for, right? What does the, and the 4th grade had a pretty good handle on the acronym, the 3rd grade was like, hmm, they really came up with some interesting words. I think, I wish I had written them down, but they came up with other words, it wasn't comprehensive, but other mathematical, oh, M was mathematical now that I'm speaking of it. They were trying to come up with educational words to match the, you know, the MCAS, so, but they knew it was a test. They asked really brilliant questions, like, will this count? Will you get, you know, they wanted to know the purpose of it.
And when they asked that question, which is a really good question-
Good question.
Okay? What answer do we give them?
Yes, it counts.
Towards what? Why do we tell them it counts towards?
The truth, I told them that there is a report, we told them that it's a colored report, because the report comes out very colored. It's actually a very readable report, from what I can understand of, you know, red, I think it's like a red, yellow, green, blue, if I'm accurate, so it can show you right there, and I think that there's like a line plot underneath the color code of where they stand amongst the state. So, we spoke that the report is like that color, we showed them, and their teachers spoke to it, but I told them that the report comes to us, it goes to their families, and that it just tells them, shows them what they know. This report tells them what they know, and that that's what the test is asking them, seeing what they know.
And what's their reaction to that?
Well, they just listened. They asked how many questions were on the test, you know, the specifics were also, you know, questioned.
And when they finished the test, are they happy, frustrated, how were you just-
They were exhausted this year, exhausted. They were exhausted. One student said, "My brain is on fire." He reported that to his teacher.
It was a 3rd grader saying his brain is on fire.
One of our 3rd graders reported that.
I love it.
I know, he said it, so that was to a student in Ms. Conlon's class.
Thank you.
Joyce?
When you talked about the students who didn't finish, what happens? Are they scored just based on the part that they did finish?
That's it.
Okay.
That's it.
I was afraid they wouldn't get credit for any of it.
No, no, they get, I look at, yes, so it's online, but they get credit for everything that they do do, and then they just hit submit, as long as they hit submit.
Okay.
They get credit for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chandler.
Thank you.
Mr. Palladino, you're up. We heard about the wild and crazy trip to Watawiz, but it sounds like the trip back from Washington DC was even more interesting. I can think of nothing better than being stuck on the side of the road in New Jersey with a bunch of 8th graders in a bus.
And two buses, I might add.
I didn't hear about this, stuck on the side of-
They got home at 4:30 this morning, is that correct?
Only 16 students and four chaperones. I happen to be one of them, so I was really excited to be here.
Well, feel free to leave and go back to bed. The boys' basketball team is postponing, I just got the message from the coach, they haven't run the two-mile yet, or the relays at CCONC.
And they're still at CCONC.
So, we'll be doing this at a meeting in May.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks for that.
So, you can leave right after this.
I've got a couple more things, but I'll take up on the offer, thank you. Now, I guess I'll jump on that, that was on my agenda, so we had 70 students and seven chaperones come back yesterday from Washington DC. I will tell you, as I told the students, I think it's better to break down on the way home than it is on the way there. So, it was quite an eventful night, but the most important thing, we got everyone home, and they were all home safe, so that's the main thing. But, yes, it certainly made me question what we were doing on the middle of 95 in Trenton, New Jersey, but it was a great trip, and the students had just a very packed itinerary, and it was just awesome to see the real-world learning when the kids were there and taking notes and writing out little reports on what they saw, and just having the opportunity for them to see that, and just kind of that aha moment when they were there, and they were kind of tying in prior learning and hopefully future learning as well, by seeing all these historical sites, monuments, museums, et cetera. It was a great time. The kids were great, we had great chaperones, great itinerary, everything was great until yesterday, approximately 4:30 in the afternoon. But I'll move on, and we'll get past that, and I'd certainly want to give a shout-out to the parents. The first bus made it back for, I believe, 12:30, and my bus was, it was actually about 4:00 by the time we got to the school. So, I will talk about some attendance to get things started. So, we have, for the month of March, overall attendance rate of 93.4, and I did go back as kind of requested to look at the unexcused versus excused, and it breaks down, 25% are excused in, according to our handbook, not according to DESI. Term III also ended for us on Friday, and the report cards went out today. Last week, we completed the 10th grade ELA MCAS, and next week, we have the Grade 8 ELA MCAS. On April 15th, the Wareham Minutemen and Militia will have an event at the high school, historic event. On April 26th, we will have our Career and College Scoop Night, which is going to obviously be some ice cream, but also, most importantly, be talking about opportunities for students in regards to their future careers and college. May 10th, we have an art show. May 13th is our promenade and prom. We're going to be at the Cape Club, which formerly was Ballymead. This will be my fourth prom there, so I'm pretty excited about that, they do a great job there, and that starts at 6:00 PM. May 16th, we will have our National Honor Society Induction Ceremony. May 17th, the Spring Concert. And May 23rd, a fairly new event, that the first year we did this was during the pandemic, and it seems to have stuck around, this is our Senior Car Parade on Tuesday, May 23rd. On May 30th, we are going to have our senior slideshow and barbecue, and on May 31st, the senior class is going to Six Flags as a senior class trip, and the senior breakfast provided by the school committee will be on June 1st. We hope that you could be there, it's in the high school cafeteria at 8:00 AM. And then, one of my favorite events, the Senior Send-Off, will also be on June 1st, and we're going to start that at approximately, hopefully, 9:45, just after our rehearsal. That same night, June 1st, we have our Senior Academic Awards and Scholarship, that's Thursday, June 1st, and Friday, June 2nd, is graduation, and I'm hoping the weather will cooperate, fingers crossed. It's always great when you can do it on Friday, obviously. For the month of June, we are planning on a lot of curriculum work. The beauty of getting out early in June is you have an opportunity for people to still get some things done from a curriculum standpoint, and they're still eager to do that, because the 4th of July hasn't happened yet. So, once the 4th of July comes through, it's tough to get people back for curriculum work, so we're excited about that opportunity. We have several grants that we received with the help of Dr. Schwam and Dr. DeAndrea that are already being implemented as we speak, including the Accelerated Learning for High Quality Instruction, which has allowed us to bring back an excellent program that's getting rave reviews, called StudySync. And we've also, as I mentioned, I believe, at the last meeting, been able to bring back our core ELA teacher and program through another grant, and we're excited for that as well, and that's in evidence-based practice grants. So, we are excited to get those things going, and most of them are in the process, but certainly there'll be more work being done this spring. Certainly, we would pause for any questions you might have.
April.
I don't have any questions necessarily, but I'm just really excited that you guys were able to bring back the DC trip. I know that my son's grade was the first one after many, many years, and then COVID happened immediately afterwards, so I'm really glad, despite breaking down on the New Jersey Turnpike that you guys got to go. I've spent most of my vacations as a child broken down on the New Jersey Turnpike, so I know from experience how much of a fun time that is, but I'm glad that they enjoyed it and that they got something out of it, and I'm definitely glad to have these dates, because my senior tells me nothing, so I'm very excited to now be able to take the time off to be there to properly embarrass him, so thank you.
I'll email you the document, and it is going out to parents as well, but I'll email it to you as well.
Perfect.
You might need a few more events in May.
May is a busy month for all of us.
Jeff?
By the way, I grew up in New Jersey, I know the New Jersey Turnpike intimately, you have my deepest sympathies.
The fortunate piece was, we were only about two miles before a pretty nice rest area that had four choices for dinner, so if you had to break down, being close to that, it was opportunistic, I guess, in one way.
My question is, I had the privilege of being a chaperone for the South Coast Conference Leadership Conference today, where 10 of, actually, it turned out to be nine, but that's all right, nine of our wonderful students represented Wareham, and it was a very good event. But it occurred to both Sam and myself that that opportunity won't be available next year, for obvious reasons, but it also occurred to us that maybe we should initiate something like that if Mayflower doesn't have that, and offer to host it, because I don't know, have we ever hosted the South Coast Conference Leadership Conference?
So, our issue has been space, and we just don't have a lot of spare space. We're really tight in the high school, so you have to have certain areas that you can house the students, and it's just difficult. We have housed events in the past, but not since the 8th graders have been in.
I suppose you could theoretically think about doing it at the elementary school.
Yeah, she's got a huge building.
She does have one.
It's, they really want to have, they really want to have it at the high schools, but-
Well, they did not have today at a high school.
No.
It was at the Fairhaven Rec Center.
Oh, okay.
So, it doesn't have to be at a high school, apparently.
Sure, yeah. I'm sure we could find a location.
Just something to think about as a way of introducing Wareham to the Mayflower League with a bang.
Right, right. Yeah, we could, we could find a spot, there's spots, but-
Just a thought.
Sure, and we have to get a little more educated on what they do as a conference as well.
And it was really interesting, when someone asked the nine students about the day afterwards, as we were coming home, one of the students said, "It went from really fun to really serious really fast." So, it was an interesting experience.
Fun being the icebreakers and then-
Exactly.
-getting into the depth of the curriculum after that?
Yeah.
Got it, makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. Palladino. We'll be here in a couple of minutes, I guess.
I will be back.
Next up, it looks like a student representative report, there's no ending-
He's on the track.
-tonight, on the track team, okay.
He would be.
Very good. We have minutes of the meeting next, so I was wondering if we could have a motion to accept the four meeting minutes from 8:04, 8:25, 9:01, and 9:15.
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, staying 5-0-0. Okay, next up, we have the Student Advisory Report.
So, I know you all know Gisella Priestley. Gisella is just a really dedicated and hard-working student, and our meetings are during advisory, and she's coming off the bus from Bridgewater State, just in about, at about the middle of our meeting, so we're blessed to have her, she's very committed to the group, and as you know, she's always available to come in and talk during school committee meetings, so I appreciate you being here. I know the others, all are busy, one with tennis couldn't make it here, she just got, she was just finished, as Coach Sweat knows, from the tennis match, and another student has a work commitment, so Gisella was kind enough to be here, and I'm going to have her kind of talk about what we've been working on, and hopefully what we're going to finish up with for this year, so turn it over to Gisella.
So, we have been talking about mostly dress code, as it's that time of year again.
We're coming back.
Yes. Yeah, a lot of students are very passionate about it, like I've said previously. That's one of the biggest issues that I think students are very concerned about. We've also talked about e-hall passes, and people have very strong opinions about it.
Can you explain the e-hall pass a little bit?
So, e-hall pass is basically an online pass that we have to use in order if we want to go to another teacher's classroom during advisory, or if we want to go to the bathroom or anything, and it's basically to track data and make sure students aren't leaving multiple times during one- And it's basically to track data and make sure students aren't leaving multiple times during one period. And so a lot of students feel passionately about it. Some think it's a great tool. Others feel as though it can be a little excessive. But yeah.
And the staff, the majority of staff love it because it tracks usage, it tracks frequency, and it tracks if you're always asking to go for a pass at the same time as someone else. So it runs these polarity reports. And it also allows if someone's abusing that privilege, for us to put a limit on the number of passes each day. So you can see the students who never really abused it don't really have a big issue with it. And the students that abuse it have an issue because now the kind of big brother or sister is able to keep an eye on things. So it's worked out really well for us. We actually rolled it out the first year back from the pandemic. So it's our second year now, and I think it's gone well.
Yeah, we've made some adjustments with it this school year with representatives. Yeah, sorry.
We adjusted the bathroom times.
Yes, we did, which students are very appreciative about. And yeah, those have been the biggest issues, I feel like, that we've been having to talk about. And going back to dress code, the same concerns with the Crown Act, like we were talking about last time, we have been talking about thoroughly, which has been, we've made progress with it.
And we'll be presenting some of that progress in a few weeks.
Yes.
And did you want to talk about the future survey that we're looking at for the spring? Or were you not ready to talk about that yet?
We were thinking about sending, we talked about a survey a couple meetings back, I think. That was quite long. And we were thinking about sending out a new one that was shorter and more specific. Mr. Palladino wanted one specifically on the culture of the school and students' opinions on that. And so that, we need to talk about a little bit more in depth. But we have been making progress to deciding what we want it to be about.
And we hope to get that out sometime in May so we can encapsulate senior responses as well.
Yes. Yeah. And then one thing completely off topic, but another thing happening in May, that we have so much, so many things happening in May, but our musical will be happening in May. So if you guys have time, it's May 4th through 7th.
And what is the musical given?
It's Sweeney Todd. Pretty interesting show.
April, question?
So I know you're very passionate about the dress code, and I love that because I agree with you 100%. And I agreed when it was a topic when I was in high school, and I wrote an article about it in my school newspaper. So I would love to know what is so, what are the students specifically very passionate about? And in regards, I know you've mentioned the Crown Act several times. And in us putting together the handbook, I don't recall us having anything specific or not in regards to hair in there. So I'm really curious as to the students' interpretation of it and why it is so important to them.
Yeah. So in terms of hair, there have been a couple students in particular who have been very vocal about their opinions and just have presented it in an amazing way, specifically bandanas. So yeah, that is one of the biggest topics, at least for dress code, from some of my peers. And the biggest thing is that bandanas currently aren't allowed in school.
Okay.
Just, and last time we touched on it a little bit, just because of like gang affiliations, which I talked about a little bit last time. So, yeah. And it, bandanas are supposed to be protected according to the Crown Act that we talked about last time. So.
And the other pieces of the dress code, what are students the most passionate about when it comes to the dress code?
I think, I don't think that they're most passionate about any specific part besides like crop tops and stuff like that. I think that one of the biggest concerns is that students feel uncomfortable. Specifically, girls feel uncomfortable when there's teachers who are guys who are commenting on what girls are wearing. And I feel like that is probably the biggest issue. So.
I agree. I think it's the Crown Act and the midriff. That's kind of the, seems to be the only two areas that we have a deep conversation. Everything else, and wasn't there something with the jackets too that we talked about?
Yes. Some students feel as though it's a little bit of an overreach that students can't wear jackets in school. So yeah, that's mostly just in the wintertime. People feel passionate about that one.
Right.
Your new boilers should take care of that.
Too shy. Excellent. Don't forget, April 1st, you know what happens. But I think those...
Is the finance director in charge of when the heat gets turned on?
Well, it used to be my head custo, it still is my head custodian. But I feel like those guys think they pay the bill because there's days where, is the heat on? No, we shut that off three weeks ago. Okay. We can get away with some things at the high school with the heat, with just the size of the people we have in our building that I don't think other schools could do. So we're always very cognizant of the outside temperatures. But it is, the jacket really is, I don't think, I'd like to think with the new boilers, it would take care of that issue. But I'm not sure if that's the case for all students.
Any other questions for Gisella? Well, thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
She may be back up in a few minutes.
Oh, okay. Actually, I think that's next. The Pilot Club Film Vote?
He's like, "Good, get me out of the way so I can leave."
Gisella for this? All right, Gisella is going to come up. That's great. So I just want to introduce our students here that are going to present the proposal for the Pilot Film Club. And I have to my left Aiden Dillon, Kylie Sullivan, and you already met Gisella. So I'm excited about this because I think it ties in one of our electives with an opportunity for a club. So I'm going to turn it over to them and let you hear from them.
Good evening, everyone. Kylie, as he just said. And yeah, I... Okay, so I think, I think Film Club would create a space for students who have a passion and love for film to be able to vote on films to watch as a club with each other and practice media and critical analysis, as well as hold academic casual discussions afterwards. And I've gotten a lot of interest in this club after immediately like proposing it to some people I know. They have been very interested and said that they want to join. And the elective itself is quite popular. So I think there'd be a lot of interest in this club. And anything you want to add?
Well, first off, I just want to say again, thank you so much for, you know, having us here. Yeah, so this, so this whole thing has just sort of been Kylie's love child. Like, this is all she's been talking about. This is like, this is something that she's very passionate about, and it's something that I as well am very passionate about.
There's a lot of passion at the high school.
Very passionate place. Yes. So we feel that, you know, through, you know, choosing, choosing films to watch as a club, I feel like that sort of speaks to like the ability to make decisions civilly. And then also analyzing these films also does teach film analysis. And as Kylie mentioned, does speak to the film industry as a whole.
Yes. Any questions?
Is there a faculty advisor with this club?
Yes, it is Mr. Gardner. We'll be meeting on Thursdays.
He's shown interest. We will need to post it and go through the proper. But it seems like he's very interested and very passionate about this.
Dr. Schwam? And, Dr. Schwam and then April.
I just wanted to ask a question about who is the deciding, the final decision on the film?
I would say Mr. Gardner. But, oh, sorry.
So the list that we were sent of the, were those just signatures that you guys need to get in order to get interest in a new club, or those kids are already ready to sign up and join the club?
I would say a good three-fourths of them have shown, have said that they would like to join the club.
And how soon are you hoping, if, obviously, if we vote that this is a yes, how soon are you guys hoping to start like having meetings, start the club? Do, like, is this for next school year, or are you guys hoping to start it before the end of this one?
I was hoping to start it this year as a Pilot Club.
Can I ask, is there film study right now at the high school?
Yes.
And that was a class I was referencing that could build on this.
Dillon's in it.
Jeff?
So I counted not one, not two, not three, not four, but five tennis players on the list of students interested. I have a simple question. Are you going to be showing films during tennis practice time?
I hope not.
Say no.
When will you be showing films?
I think so.
When would the films be shown?
Right. So we have, as you know, a tremendous number of students that are involved in multiple athletic teams, clubs. So this wouldn't necessarily be that they'd have to go to every meeting from what they explained to me when they met with me. You could drop in. So if you have tennis, you go to tennis. If it's raining out and tennis is canceled, and this happens to happen on the same day, they could come into the club.
So to be clear, tennis gets first.
Yes, it will not interfere with tennis.
I believe there's a bona fide team rule with the MIAA that would require them to go to tennis first.
Tennis will take priority.
That was the perfect answer. Thank you, Kylie.
Joyce?
I don't really have a question. I just want to say thank you for bringing this up. Thank you for, you know, taking your passion and turning it into this. So good for you. Happy to support it.
Thank you all for having me here.
Brennan?
I just have a question. I went to school for film. That's what I'm agreeing. So what kind of, are you guys going to be watching like classic movies? Or who's going to, what kind of movies are you looking at to screen?
I would hope we would watch at least a few classic movies. I think we will...
I'm hoping you guys don't count classic movies as like something that came out in 1990.
No, I mean like old Hollywood. But I think we will throw some suggestions and sort of find what the common interest is amongst the members and vote on them. We can sort of push certain ones.
Well, let me just ask, because it will make, what's your favorite movies? Pick one real quick.
Rosemary's Baby.
All right, that's good.
I'd say Shanghai Express.
Oh, okay. Good choice. Didn't expect that one. Anne?
That's a really hard question. Um...
A Man for All Seasons.
That's such a hard question. You have no clue.
It's one that you'd watch over and over and over again, no matter how many times you've seen it.
What did we see recently?
Geez, that's a really hard question.
It's all right. We don't have to put you on the spot.
Depends on your answer.
You can tell him your answer next time.
I'll let you think about that while I ask Mr. Palladino a question. In terms of, the same kind of like policies we follow that's in the film, like if they, like an R-rated movie was chosen, is there like a parental sign-off on that if the student is underage?
Well, it's funny you should say that because Kylie, although she didn't present that, already has a plan for that that's kind of aligned with what we do in the classroom. So I'll let her answer that. She's ready for it.
So if a majority of the club wanted to watch a movie that was R-rated or was PG-13 rated but our advisor deemed to be a bit inappropriate, I suppose, for like regular school standards, we would send out a permission slip with the title of the movie, a description of the movie, and why it's rated what it's rated. And if, I mean, if for any reason, a majority of the club couldn't get it signed, then we just watch whatever else is on the list.
Good answer. Thank you.
I found my. Okay, it's called Gang Bhai. It's an Indian movie about this activist who's a prostitute. And it's literally one of my favorite movies ever. It's amazing.
What's it called?
Gang Bhai. It's amazing. So.
I will be pushing at least one anime Wong film. At least one.
Well, as a former film study teacher myself, we had a film club at the high school I worked at in the past, and it was great. And the kids loved it. And so I wish you luck. And, well, first we have to take a vote. Do I have a motion?
Approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second? All in favor? Any discussion?
Just make sure they don't come to this coach and say, "I have to go watch a film."
They will never.
They can watch it after practice and catch up.
Is there a movie about tennis?
Yeah, we could watch a tennis film.
No.
What if they watch the film about tennis at tennis practice?
No, they can't interfere. They can't interfere.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obstained? 5-0-0. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, Recording Secretary tonight has the next presentation on the finance report. And I did fail to mention earlier that this meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WCTV.
Kristin doesn't get any credit for the effort?
Well, she's not recording, I don't believe.
But she seemed like she was taking notes.
Yes, I have been...
Minutes. She's taking minutes. Yes. Thank you.
Very quick notes. I hope that Jamie can read them. So I'll be available for transcription. So tonight, as the finance director, I have a budget transfer request for you. I broke it up into three categories. It's one transfer, but I thought it would just be easier to break it up into, you know, like categories. So the first one is for home and hospital tutoring. This is tutoring our students who are not able to attend school, but they still need to receive instruction. We have two accounts for that. One is for regular day students, and those are the non-special education students. And there's one for the special education students because we have to, we have to take our accounts and make, and report them as special ed or regular day. So that's why you see two different accounts there for essentially the same thing. So I'm looking to transfer, and this will be for anticipated expenditures for, to hopefully get us through to June 30th. We have some invoices already outstanding that need to be paid for these services. So we're looking to transfer $9,235 into regular day home instruction and $12,886 into special education home instruction. The budget counts that we are transferring from are some instructional accounts, regular instruction, assistant contract services, and this is an account that has not been used. Also District Special Ed Instruction Contract Services and Special Ed Student Services Home Instruction. Now that one there is, I think when I came to you for a prior budget transfer, it was for housekeeping, to take it from the salary account and put it into the vendor account. Because the only accounts that we had for home instruction were a salary account. And it was being paid to vendors out of a salary account. So that first budget transfer a few months ago was just housekeeping to get it to the right spot. So this one here is to add funds to that right spot because we have a deficit and will continue to have one anticipating out through June 30th. So that's the explanation for that first section. The second section is again a transportation budget transfer. This is for our special ed contracted services. I think at the last meeting, I talked about that this would be upcoming because we had some students that had recently had some transportation changes. The vans or the buses that they were on, they had to change for, you know, whatever reason. They're going to a different placement or timing or so some of these. So this affects a few students that had been on vans with other students, and now they had to change to a different van. So to get us through for that, I'm requesting a transfer of $43,821. And the transfer is coming from the Massachusetts Schools Occupational Ed Tuition, the remaining balance in that. And again, that was our tuition that we did not need to expend to Bristol County Agricultural School. And then also District Lease of Equipment, an account that we currently do not have any expenditures for. So that's where those funds are coming from. And finally, the third segment of the budget transfer is to transfer funds into the high school maintenance of building to address elevator repairs. We needed to have the elevator worked on and fixed, and so it was out of order. So we had to get that fixed rather quickly so our students could access, that needed to access the second floor and could not do so by the stairs were able to do so. So this, those unexpected invoices put the account into a deficit. So we just need to transfer some funds into that account to address that. And the account that we're taking it from is the High School Printing Paging Contracted Services. So that one has some funds that we do not anticipate expending through the end of the year. So that is the transfer that I'm looking for for tonight.
Any questions? April? I'd like to do it as a collective if you wouldn't mind. Yeah, okay.
Seconded?
Any discussion?
I do have a question. So Kristin, you, in the maintenance of building, high school maintenance of buildings, so now that leaves that account with only $450. Are you hoping that that's going to make it to the end of the year, not wanting to put? So like the transfer, the special ed in and out contracted services, that one, obviously, you're putting more money in there because you anticipate spending it.
Correct. Yes. And this one here, because it's a, because of transfer requests that's coming is from a 2,000 account, that fourth, the fifth section numbers, that requires a school committee contract services. So if something comes up, a school committee approval, that's the account that was requested to have the funds transferred from. to have the funds transferred from. If something comes up that requires a quick transfer into maintenance of building, we do have funds in other 4,000 accounts that we could do per the policy without school committee approval, as long as it's not over 25,000. So I think that was my line of thinking here, to try to keep money where it is unless I need it, unless I need it to go to someplace else. And then of course, at the end of the year, I'm sure that there will be some budget transfers to get the accounts, to get the accounts properly funded for any other deficits, so that was the line of thinking for that one there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we have the motion, the second, all in favor? Aye? Posed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you and good evening. First, on my report are the bill and payroll warrants, so I ask that you approve those.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Posed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you, and I also wanted to remind everyone, April 24th is town meeting. We have a number of warrant articles that will be, come up for a vote. We have the roof project at the middle school, which is going to be about seven and a half million dollar warrant article. We have the McKinney Vento, that's about 35,000. And we also have a capital planning committee warrant article for three school buses, two, one large 77 passenger and two smaller special education buses. And then of course, we have the, we have the budget itself that will be part of the meeting. I am presenting for the roof, just a brief five-minute presentation, that's just going to show the damage that we have, the leaks and the cost and why it needs to be done. And of course, I'll be there to answer any questions on the other warrant articles and on the budget. Kristen will be there and also Eric. And I just wanted to put that out as a reminder.
Do we have any control, like does the budget go up first or is that all a lottery?
They usually do it as a lottery, so that people don't leave.
Right.
Yeah, the whole, the whole meeting will be done that way.
So while we were talking about that, I just wanted to thank you and Kristen and Eric for, you guys did a great job presenting those articles at the finance committee meeting. And just to note that the town administrator is very supportive.
He really is, he's been great.
Of the schools and, you know, continues to be supportive of the schools, so.
And I actually think, I appreciate the alert, but I think the town violas requires us to show up.
Is that right?
Yes.
For...
Well, then I guess we'll be there.
I'll see you there.
Not that we wouldn't have been.
If we want to vote on it.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Or maybe it's just department heads. Some reason I thought we were supposed to be there. Anyway, doesn't matter.
Next is the school committee report, the student travel policy. We have to take a vote on that tonight. It was presented to us at the last meeting. Dr. Deandrea, do you want to address that at all?
So, there hasn't been any changes, there have been questions about it. Do you want to?
Yes, I have a question. You can, you can talk about it.
So, yeah, so there's no changes. This aligns with the audit that we had done for our student activities account. There was a question brought up about school committee approving field trips. I did look and it is not codified in a policy that school committee approves field trips. I noticed that the practice has been that it comes to, some of these trips come to school committee. I don't know if it's any particular field trips, if it's overnight field trips, if it's out of state field trips, but there is no policy that outlines that. I don't know if this committee would like to consider putting that part of this policy or if that's something that would be a separate policy.
April?
I would think having, just like with the DC trip and things like that, it's always been brought to the school committee for a vote. I think if it's out of state or overnight, I think that that seems for liability purposes that we are made aware to vote on it.
So, I agree, but that's not the policy right now.
But no, I think he's asking if we add it to this policy.
Well, so I...
Or would it have to be a separate policy?
When I asked the question, I did include a copy of a policy from another district that did come from MASC, right? And so it's an additional policy that addresses late night or overnight travel anywhere. So, and yes, I agree, like it's been practice that overnight trips, some overnight trips have come to us for approval, but not all. And it's not part of, and I appreciate that that has happened, but it isn't part of a policy anywhere.
So would it, could we, in a sense, backdoor it in through this, do you think? Or do you think it's cleaner, they just have a separate policy? Like could we put it under trip scheduling, potentially? Where it says, for example, a trip form must be completed prior to the trip. We could also say that school committee do have to recommend any out of state or overnight trips at that point as well, potentially, which would then cover us, I think.
Wait, wait, under trips?
Under number two, trip scheduling towards the end, potentially, just a suggestion. Where a trip request form must be completed, we could also say school committee...
Completed and presented to the school committee?
Well, that the school committee must have approved as well.
So this, this second policy that I was talking about, the name of it is just student travel, very short, so it could definitely be included, but I guess we would have to, sorry, I know this is like your third go at this.
It's fine.
That we would have to include it. It's not just one or two sentences, we couldn't just add it now, although it is short, but it's not that.
Well, could we just add that policy at a later meeting?
We could.
Knowing that this has been a past practice, so we're not really doing anything that we haven't done in the past, it's just codifying it, like you said.
And then put that before policy review, or would that have to, or no, new policy doesn't have to go policy review. Okay.
We should bring it at the next meeting.
So we could accept this right now and bring to the next meeting the policy about approval for overnight trips and out of state trips?
Yeah, just approval for late night or overnight trips, yeah.
So, that being said, do we have a motion to approve this, this travel policy? Jeff, question?
Yeah, I was, when I was reading this, I was troubled by the term late night. We all know what overnight means, meaning presumably they're sleeping somewhere and then getting back on the bus. I, I was troubled by, I didn't know exactly what late night meant, and if it is late night, whatever that means, it means we can't use school transportation department buses because this says it will be commercial motor coaches. So could we at least have some clarity as to what late night means?
My interpretation is that one that would be coming back late at night.
Yeah, but what does that mean? I frankly...
My idea of late at night might be...
Well, that's my point.
After 6:30.
Right, Joyce goes to bed at 7:30, right? You know, so it just, it just seems to me late night needs to be clarified. I mean, frankly, I've gotten home from tennis matches at nine o'clock at night, is that late night?
So the fact that this says late night or overnight trips will use commercial, like the basketball team when they went to the championship used a commercial bus or something, you know what I mean? I think it would be, I think it would be more for the overnight than the late night.
I'm only looking for clarity.
No, I agree, it is unclear, because it does...
And late night is not clear to me.
Do you want to put in parentheses, after 9:00 PM?
I'm, I'm open to whatever...
I'd go later than that, because you got basketball games, but you could say after 10:00 or 11:00, you'd be fine.
Yeah, I mean, put a time in there.
I would say no later than, because I mean, late night would be within the same 24-hour period, so I would say at least anything before midnight, because then it would consist overnight if it goes into the next day.
Parenthesis, you know, after midnight is probably very safe.
That's, would be my guess, because then it becomes overnight technically, because then it's the next day.
All right.
It's not a big amendment, it's just clarifies what late night means.
So do I have a motion to make an amendment?
So moved.
Well, and what would that amendment be?
The amendment would be late night, parenthesis, after midnight. Close parenthesis.
All right, so we have the motion, do I have a second?
Second. Oh, I made the motion, never mind, just kidding.
He made the motion, you have the second.
I'll take your second.
Okay.
Sounds good. Aye, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Posed, five zero zero. So that we have the original motion now, which is to accept this travel policy.
So moved.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended. So moved, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Posed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you.
Just want to make that more complicated for our recorder over there.
Look at her.
It's making my brain overbrain, so I get it.
So, to be clear, so you'll bring the second policy to the school committee next time?
Next meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It'll be the exact one that you sent me.
All right, thank you.
Unless Jeff changes it.
That's right.
All right, also under school committee report, we have superintendent evaluation procedure. And I'd ask this one to be on the agenda, just to make sure that we have clarity going forward for our meeting on the 27th. Couple of issues. First, I want to remind everyone that your individual evaluations are due to me by April 14th. So I really want to stress that, if you want to get it to me beforehand, feel free, gives me more time to make a composite. I handed out this sheet, which was from MASC, that I'd given you before via email, with just some things highlighted that I, hopefully could be discussed, some of these things tonight. For example, if you look to paragraph number four, where in the middle of the paragraph it says, "Therefore, a compiler must have a method for arriving at the composite rating. This should be more than assigning a number to each rating descriptor, adding them up and taking an average. The final composite rating should reflect a preponderance of the individual ratings. Note that, however, committees can certainly present the individual ratings when discussing the evaluation in public." So the whole gist of this advice from MASC is to be upfront with everything and not figuring it out the night of the final evaluation. So I did want to have a couple of questions for the committee. The first is, would it be helpful for me to compose a chart or a grid that showed the individual ratings on each goal in each standard, so there is a bit of a tally, where you can visually see the preponderance of scores? Is that something we think we should, I should present, we should present on that night on the 27th?
Is it something you would present to give to the superintendent anyway?
Well, he has the right to know. He will know it anyway, because he'll get everyone's individual evaluation, so it's nothing secretive. It would just be for us to hear all at once and maybe visually see also, hopefully, how I arrived at what I consider to be a preponderance of evidence of ratings.
So, I'm just, for clarification, so in the past, from the ones that I've been a part of, we've taken the numerical scoreings at the school committee, each individual person, and averaged them, and that was a score, and this is saying to not do that?
We're not doing that this time. We've decided, the evaluation subcommittee said we're just simply following the state form this time. So there is no, there is no weighting, there's no...
But we're using it, but it's not going into the weight of the evaluation? Like, are we not using it, period?
We are not using any kind of weighted math average this time around. It's simply the form. So, for example, we might have three people rate one thing proficient and two might rate it exemplary, let's say. And so I'm just asking the question, do we want to make that visible to all?
First, first of all, I don't need it to be visible, because to me, it's just math and I trust you to do the math.
But it's not math if you're saying that we took the math out of it.
It is math if you take the, if you assign a numerical value to the words proficient, needs improvement, whatever, that's easy enough to assign a numerical value to.
But they just said that we took that away.
It did take that form away, but since we are using a form that can be converted into mathematical equivalence, meaning there are still, it's still, if I, I'm doing this from memory, but exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, and...
Unsatisfactory.
Unsatisfactory. So those, that's called one through four or zero through three, whatever you want to call it, it's mathematical, it can be converted into math, and therefore you can come up with a number based on all the proficiency and et cetera that were given. And I trust you to do that. On the other hand, that's simple, because that's simple math. By the way, as the person who I think created the form that we're no longer going to use, the very reason I created it was to eliminate the problem of what does this all add up to? So my second question is, does preponderance of the evidence, which is a lovely phrase, but what exactly does that mean? Does that mean the mathematical equivalent, which you can generate using what I just described, or is it some other thing, nuanced concept that goes beyond math?
Like your gut feeling, like if two people said this and three people said that, but you're leaning more towards this, I see what you're saying. I, I think math is better, because to me...
I think math is better, too.
But the exemplary, proficient, those are set, though there's no, there's no interpretation of those.
I'm not suggesting...
Well, no, I think he's saying if two, if three say proficient and two say exemplary, and he, say he was one of the ones that thought exemplary, would he be more likely to, A, put that in an exemplary category moreover than a proficient category?
I would consider three to be the preponderance of evidence there.
Well, no, I think, but I understand what Jeff is saying, that at that point it becomes the discretion of the chair to determine whether he slides it one way or the other. Not that we don't trust...
No, I get that, but that's, that's why I was asking about doing like a grid, just so everyone can see it, and if there was any questions that night, I mean, you all have it ahead of time anyway, but if, you could see it and then we could see the grid and...
I guess what it comes down to...
It's trust and verify.
I'm asking the chair, if you're going to use the phrase, "preponderance of the evidence" to determine something in your composite, okay, how are you going to use it? Is it going to be mathematically derived or is it going to be, as April said, based on your gut feeling after having read all five evaluations?
It's, I think, I'm thinking more of mode than mean here, in a way.
Okay, but that's still...
Not bad for an English major.
That's still lovely ambiguity.
So I'm an English major.
Well, isn't ambiguity philosophy...
I think what I want to do is, I was going to put the composite together, my idea of preponderance of evidence is, like I said, it's mode, it's, if three people out of the five have a certain rating, to me, that's going to carry the day.
How about hypothetically, of course, how about if one evaluation is perfunctory? There's obviously very little effort given into, given to it, whereas you have three where there's all sorts of explanations for why they gave the evaluation that they did. Will that impact...
No, because the form doesn't require you to write anything unless it's above or below proficient. So you don't need any comments by the state itself, so it's just the final rating, that's all that really matters. Unless you're trying to get exemplary or you're putting needs improvement, but you don't have to write a comment according to the state.
I admit I have a bias towards math and I absolutely trust you to do the math, but if it becomes some, a judgment call as compared to the interpretation of the data based on mathematical equivalence, then I do want to have a sense of how you got what you got.
Which I'm more than, that's why I'm asking, I'm more than willing to do that.
Right.
And I do think, certainly when we vote that night, we can vote on individual ratings if there's not an agreement, and it's going to be the preponderance of votes that carries the day.
Okay, and once, let's assume we get to that step, we've got that, okay? We've got a, a characterization, the composite is a characterization of the five, of the performance. What, is there a precise process to get to a math, to get to a salary increase?
We have to have, according to contract, he'd have to be rated overall as exemplary to get the salary increase. To get proficient, if he's proficient, he gets a 2% raise, superintendent gets a 2% raise.
Okay, and if he's exemplary, he gets...
3.5, I believe, 3.5.
So you're saying... So you're saying there's nothing in between? It's either two, or three and a half, or some number less than two, based on...
By contract, yes.
Okay.
It's a contract that we, we created.
I still would love, speaking only for myself, and not having discussed it with anybody, I would still love to have the flexibility of something in between two and three and a half, for example, if in fact, the preponderance of the evidence suggests that that is the fairer thing to do.
I'm not against that at all. I think that's something we would have to revisit the contract and renegotiate.
Well, we are the school committee, so we...
We can do that, right.
As we see fit, as long as the, as long as the superintendent doesn't mind the change.
Depends on the change.
Exactly, it does depend on the change, but...
Right, but no, I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm just...
Interested party in this, in this process, so...
And I'm just going by what the contract states now.
I understand.
So I think the, just because we are, you know, presenting this not just to us, but to the public as well, I think having a way that, that is easier for them to understand how we got to what we get to, especially when any raise, an increase in salary is based on, it's going to affect the entire town because it's budgetary, I think that if we do have some sort of grid, I don't want to put more work on you.
That's not a problem, I'm going to do one anyway.
Well, but it's also for any future chair, because now that this is the new standard that we're going by, we have an election coming, which luckily, I think, it's the same, hopefully, two people that are, we're not, no one new is coming in, but that's not to say that the following year, that that's not going to be what happens. So I think if we set some sort of clearer standard where this is being presented, so that the public has a better understanding of how we got to this point, why we rated what we did, and they can see what constituted us allowing for an increase in salary, I think transparency-wise, I would prefer that, especially as a voter, that making sure that we're as clear and upfront with, as possible, with anything that could affect any future budget.
I completely agree.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Just a couple other points I wanted to make, other than April 14th is the deadline to get them into me.
What day?
So, by the state form, technically, all anyone has to do is comment on the indicator, the focus indicator, as agreed to by the subcommittee and the superintendent and the school committee. However, we did have the discussion about if people wanted to comment on other indicators, they could feel free to do that, and the superintendent agreed to that, but I just want to make it clear that you don't have to comment on every single indicator. You do have to comment on the focus indicators minimally, I just want to put that out there. And then, lastly, I just want to make sure we're clear on who gets what when going forward. I know in the past, we've, I don't think we've given, I don't say we, but previous committees maybe have not given the evaluation before the open meeting, and I believe, as Dr., as what the presser said from MASC in our first workshop at the beginning of the year, that, no, the superintendent absolutely has a right to see it ahead of time. So I guess I just want to make sure we're all on the same page about when you think the superintendent should receive it, when should the committee also see it, see the composites?
Prior to the meeting?
Right.
That should absolutely happen, the superintendent should absolutely...
Are we talking like 24 hours, 48 hours? What do you, what do we think is appropriate?
I don't think it's critical whether it's 24 or 40 hours, 48, as long as it's simultaneous.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, so I would say that, I'll try, I'll shoot for 48, how's that? 48 hours ahead of time, the committee will see the composite draft, the superintendent will see the composite draft, superintendent also has the right to see all the individual drafts at that point as well.
Now, you use the term "draft." I don't, are you suggesting that any individual committee member would have the right to amend your composite?
Yes, I believe, according to MASC and state regulations, that we could do that. We could discuss, say there was a comment that was not put in, that someone felt really strongly should have been in the final evaluation that I left out, you do have the right to try to ask that that goes in, and it would just be a vote of the committee. So, yeah, you do have the right to do that.
So essentially, you're, the composite is a draft until approved by the school committee?
Until we vote, until, yes. That's how I interpret it.
I can live with that, okay, all right.
Dr. Swan?
I just know that our evaluation system, like, because I'm so engaged in it with the teachers and so forth, we, we don't ask anyone to officially sign off on the evaluation form until the educator has had time to look at that and clarify. So, for example, say an evaluator has written something, and the teacher might have a question, "What did you mean by that?" Or, or, or what is that, like, how, how is that interpreted, or what did you see, right, for specific reasons? So they could have a conversation. It may not change anything in the end, but at least there's a conversation about that ambiguity in there, and is that an expectation in this process as well?
Well, I think that night, we're going to have a final evaluation given. I don't think there's a chance to come, if you mean, is there a chance to come back later? There's a chance for Matt, Dr. DeAndrea to ask his questions, sure.
No, you're saying, you were planning to give it either 24 or 48 hours ahead of time.
Right.
Which gives, to everyone.
Oh, right.
Does that give, then, the opportunity for anything that needs to be clarified prior to the public?
It would have to be done in individual questions, we could not have a group discuss it.
It's an open meeting law.
But we, I mean, an individual could ask, like, Matt could ask an individual member a question, I suppose, at that point.
Like, why did you write, what did you mean by this?
Right, or do you have, do you not understand this, or whatever. Well, if you had a question, like, I didn't understand something, feel free to, you have all the evidence now from Dr. DeAndrea, anyone can reach out to him at any time regarding that.
So in regard to that, would they have to, would they copy you as the person doing the composite, so as long as there's only two school committee members? Like, so say if Matt had a question for me, would he copy you, so that you're aware that he has a question, whereas you're putting the composite together, but it's still not a form?
I think that seems reasonable.
Okay.
Yeah.
But if the clarification is related to the composite, then it seems to me that that probably is going to occur the night of...
It would, I couldn't change anything till that night.
Exactly, and, but, but the superintendent should feel free to ask questions at that time.
Right, I would agree with that, too, yes. Yep.
So be ready for a long night, is what we should care.
Well, it's a student, it's a faculty recognition, and it's a long night, and you do, congratulations on being the only educator that gets to be evaluated in public. That's, so, all right, that answered my questions.
You have one school committee now and not six, so, you know, we're making it easier on you.
Let's see, school committee report, that's good. Any other business? All right, so I think, I want to make sure I say this the right way, I'm not sure if I am or not, but can I have a motion to enter into recess with the plan to reconvene an executive session after the recess to discuss school safety issues?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0-0. We will have a 10-minute recess, and then we will reconvene an executive session.
Where?
Right, right here.